All right. Five thirty. And this is the call to order to the Board of Trustees for Northwestern Michigan College for August. Lynn, could we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Any votes checked?
Present.
President.
President.
Jody Lundquist.
Present.
Kenner Weaver.
Here.
Ken Warner.
Here.
Laura Ollinger.
Mark Keely.
Here. And if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
And with that, trustees, do you have any alterations or changes to the agenda? Looks like that is a no. And so we're going to move right into mission and values in action. And I have the pleasure to introduce Matt Holstrom, who is going to join us via Zoom. I believe he's home in Ann Arbor. And to hear his story, and really, I got a chance to meet with an instructor who was influential in his time here, Dr. Jay Smith. And I look forward to hearing Matt's story, you know, really impactful to hear his story and how really comes to life our mission for delivering lifelong learning opportunities. And I think Matt, his story is pretty inspirational in that way. Lynn, would you like to?
Yes, we should have.
Welcome.
Okay, yeah. Hi. Thanks for the introduction. Happy to be here. You know, like I said, my name's Matt Holstrom. I was an NMC student from August of '21, and then I graduated in May of '23. And basically, my story here is I moved to Traverse City in the summer of 2021 with my wife. She came over to Traverse City following a job, and I was working remote during COVID. So I had originally attended Orange Tech and Schoolcraft and Open University after I graduated high school in 2009. Ultimately ended up dropping out.
Thank you, Matt, for sharing your story. Really inspirational. And I think that this is a testament to, you know, the programs in place and the fine instruction that we have here at NMC, too. So thank you so much for sharing your stories. But what I would like to do is open it up to the trustees and see if they have some questions for Matt.
Sure, I'll ask one, Matt. Hi, I'm Pam. Just wondering, were there some things outside the classroom, either some student success kinds of activities that might have helped you get, stay on track? Or were there extracurricular kinds of things that you participated in at NMC when you were here?
I'm sorry, the audio was broken.
Oh, okay. See if this helps. I'm just wondering if there were things outside of the classroom, either perhaps some student success kinds of activities that helped you get and stay on track with your academic success? Or were there some extracurricular things you were involved with at NMC either?
Sure. And I think I've heard your question correctly. You're talking like more of like what, like the extracurricular involvement?
Yeah. And were there people outside of the faculty who helped you as well?
Outside of faculty?
Mm-hmm.
Well, not necessarily. I was pretty straight and narrow in terms of my involvement in like, so in particular with the engineering curriculum, I was able to forge a pretty good relationship with Jay. I think I took, you know, 11 courses directly under him. I'm pretty sure everything, every single course he taught, I took in my two years there. So I used that relationship with my wife and my wife's colleagues and whatnot, more of a support system there than anything outside of the faculty.
Well, thank you so much, Matt, for sharing your story, taking the time. We really do appreciate you. And please consider returning to live, to Traverse City. We'd love to have you back here full time. Just come on back. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And moving on, next, we're going to talk, Jason Slate, join us for the strategic initiatives update. Hi, Jason.
Hey. Good afternoon. Lynn, that threw me off there for a second. All of a sudden, like somebody else was driving. Hey, thank you very much for having me here today. I thought that was a really great testimonial that we heard from Matt and his story on success here at the college. And I think it really represents what this strategic plan did, right? We had a student that came in, that actually returned to the college, used some of the resources that we had within our strategy number two, which was on leveraging, reconnect, and other state dollars to get adult learners back in the classroom. Jay Smith and the flexible class offerings that he had, I mean, here you had a student that was taking classes from hotel rooms while he was working. We can all relate to that, you know? And he's sitting there able to not only finish the pathway here, but then successfully navigate to U of M, and ultimately, he's going to get a master's degree. Like, I mean, I couldn't tee that up better for like, why we did this plan? Because here's an individual that was basically encompassing two or three of our strategies just with his update. So hats off to Jay and Jerry. I mean, you guys have developed a fantastic engineering pathway, and so thank you for that. This is my last update on this strategic plan, though we will have a follow-up related to the Great Lakes Water Studies as we look at their financial performance most likely in September. But as it comes to the full plan, this is my last update. It's okay if you're sad. I'm a little emotional, too. No, this has been great. I really have to applaud the board here, because really, it was your leadership that allowed the strategic plan to come front and center at every board meeting. I mean, I don't think there's a lot of colleges, universities, organizations that make the strap plan a priority, right? Oftentimes, we see the strategic plan in a nice brochure, or maybe on banners on a wall, or some sort of messaging along with like a company promise, but we don't actually see the execution of it. And so really, I tip my hat to the board, because you made it a priority. So every month, you dedicated time to this plan. You allowed champions to speak. More importantly, working with Lynn and her team, you brought together those that maybe were executing the mission, the vision, the values, our faculty members that were actually delivering this learning in the classroom. And we kicked off every board meeting with that. It would have been, you could have kicked off just as easily with the other priorities of the college, but we really made the strap plan our focus. So thank you for doing that. I will not go line by line with this one, this memo, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. I mean, this is really a document that I'm thinking that you can share, right? So if you're out in the community, you're at a board meeting, you're meeting with a constituent or something, you know, this is really a summary of our plan to date. I tried to give our first three-year catalog there, so you can kind of see the development of the plan. I will continue to revise the data one more time, because I want to capture the final fall enrollment for fall of '25. And then I also want to see where we end up with high school graduates, which that data isn't released to January, February '26. But that'll give us a great piece or something to have in our archive that really shows what we did. And that's something I want to hold on to, because I do hope there's a time in the college's history where we look back and we're like, man, they tackled this plan and they actually got it done. So my goal here today was to kind of celebrate this, to honor the champions and the objective leads, kind of show off what they did, and really highlight to you, the board, what you made possible, you know? And so I won't go through all the metrics. You've seen the metrics, like, so most recently in July, you saw the metrics related to the finances around strategy five, which is the plan within the plan. But I will continue to highlight those and have those available. But, so as I look here and target these strategies, I just wanted to highlight a few things. You know, with our future-focused education, I can really confidently look back at this and the work of Stephen and his team and say, we met the goals or we met the intent of the goals. When I look at this strategy, you know, not only did we start delivering classes in the formats that students expect and wanted, and that's something that Jerry will talk about in a minute with his online courses, but we had that right balance. I remember Kenner at the beginning telling us not to overleverage on some of the online classes. We were right in the middle of COVID and trying to navigate through that, and we've taken that to heart. What we've done is developed tools for our chairs, our coordinators, our lead advisors to look at, and working with faculty, identify the right modality for classes, the right length of courses, everything from accelerated courses, two-week courses, eight, 16, you name it, we can offer it that way, and deliver it in the way that the students want. The other thing I think we can be proud of is like, credit for prior learning is just part of our DNA now. I mean, we're at well over, I think we're going to have over 300 students in the credit for prior learning. That's going to continue to go up, because we're developing more and more articulation agreements with career tech centers, with universities, with reverse transfer, and also looking at some of the credit for prior learning that comes out of our extended education. That's just something we do now. And it's because of that, this plan, that allowed us to get there. Like, I talked about our flexible scheduling, which led into the development of our new LMS, as we launched Canvas for all classes this fall, allows students to learn in a better online environment. And then ultimately, you saw like with stories like Matt and others, that we're able to provide classes how they wanted it. And I'd be remiss not to mention our experiential learning goal. That was a goal that we revised three times in a very positive way. It started out, we're going to meet X amount of students. Then it was, we're going to meet every student, which we did, every credit-bearing student. And then it became, we're going to offer an endorsement that we can use to differentiate the college. And that all came out of strategy one, and that was something that we can all be proud of. When I look at strategy two, this was a tough one. You go back in time, it was COVID. We were all community colleges, all colleges, frankly. We're not seeing, we're seeing dwindling enrollment. We had universities and colleges closing, and we were sitting there going, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? And so we developed this strategy that not only focused on students, but it differentiated the type of student, and then how do we retain them? And so when I look at strategy two, and I think of the work that PRMC, and admissions, and recruiting, and advising, and basically Todd's entire team have done, while we may not have met the targets as listed, we met some pretty good targets. I think there would be a lot of schools that'd be envious of where we ended up with strategy two. And so when I look at this thing, I'm really excited, because not only do we have seven semesters of increased enrollment, we actually have a mechanism now that's beginning to align, what's our strategy to market a program, to get leads generated for a program, follow up with those students, and then see them ultimately admitted to the college? So we're not just kind of throwing it out there and hoping that it works. We're actually targeting those students, could be by geographic region, could be by high school, could be by interest area, and then following them entirely through our process. That's something we had not done before, and we've done that with our distinctive programs. We continue to provide success coaching for our students, so this allows students to be successful in our programs. And without that, they would just be a number maybe on semester one, and we'd never see them again. And so persistence was a key part of this strategy, and we were able to accomplish that. And so I think back to where we were, Lynn brought it up today, that we were sitting in our home offices, if you will, online, trying to figure out what was going to come next. We've done a lot since that time. And I think we can look back and see our enrollment targets and our student success metrics representative of our hard work. And so again, that'll be a strategy that continues on our next plan, because student success and retention are going to ultimately continue to be critical. When I look at our strategy number three, you know, this was a really unique undertaking. This was an opportunity for the college to be creative and willing to investigate and understand diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging for our landscape here at the college. And so we were fortunate enough with the vision of Nick, bringing in Marcus Bennett to lead this charge. We were able to really develop some unique characteristics for the college. We were able to see what were those barriers that our students were facing? What's that single mom in Calcasper, or a single dad in Kingsley facing before they come back to school? How about that student that we just saw that was having to work and navigate life while trying to get an engineering degree? You know, that's exactly what we're trying to do. And it was a very hard test by us to look ourselves in the eye and say, what are our policies doing to stop students from coming here? What's not allowing them to be successful? What should we be focused on? And so this gave us a chance to actually look at the entire state of community colleges and universities or colleges our size, and see what they were doing, what are we doing, and how could we do more? It was also incredibly focused on vibrancy and belonging. We knew right away that our students had to feel connected to the college, and you've seen that with our student updates that we have at the beginning of this meeting so often. And that was the work of Marcus and Campus Life and others to say, hey, how do we make people feel like they not only just signed up for a class at NMC, but they actually belong here? And that all came out of the strategy, and we'll continue with our work as we look at belonging and vibrancy in that next plan. Strategy four, community partnerships. As we look at this one, again, this was a chance for us to look at things a little bit differently. So when I jump into strategy four, I think about our work in terms of successfully landing a 3D printer. So this is a 3D concrete printer that hopefully revolutionized workforce housing for the region, for the state, and our students on the forefront of it. They're working in a construction technology program, and now they have another tool in their toolkit or toolbox, or whatever metaphor that you want to use, that they can deploy. We actually launched a workforce and training program, and we were systematic about it. Up until this point, we had been leveraging NMC training services, which spun out to MMTC. And this plan allowed us to bring that training back in-house, continue to partner with strong partners like MMTC, but deliver the custom training that our employers wanted. So our work with Sarah Lee would not be successful without this type of plan here. And then I think about the financial performance, right? We had ease at the beginning of this thing, was minus $485,000 in the hole. When we're done with this year, they're going to be pretty close to breaking even when we factor in the money that they've given back to the academic side for joint offering. That was worked through this plan and support by our business office, as they helped them understand our finances and revenue sources better. And this was direct connect programs. We have the university partners move back onto campus, or they're in the process of moving onto campus into the Beckett Building. We're building those stronger partnerships, so it's seamless. They started at NMC, they finished at GVSU, Davenport, CMU, Ferris. And to them, they came in one door, and they successfully walked out with that bachelor's degree, master's degree, or something else. And it was that work by our advising team that allowed that to happen. So again, we wanted to make sure that we were meeting students where they were, and also meeting the demands of employers, as they were looking for that skilled workforce. And then strategy five, I'm pretty sure keeps Troy and I both up at night. We joked that plan within a plan, but this is, this one is, it's a beast. But I'm proud of the work that we did with this. I mean, we have a $14 million aviation expansion that'll be coming online in September, and we already have students in the pipeline that are currently in our academic classes, building out that plus 33% increase that we want in that student population. We look at the work as we try to position the Great Lakes Water Studies Institute, as we brought the Freshwater Research and Innovation Center here to Northern Michigan, something that'll help that program propel forward as they meet the needs of future workforce and blue tech. I look at the Great Lakes Culinary Institute, which had to reimagine everything they were doing, including staffing models, what they were offering, certifications, and more, and were able to turn that program around into something that is very vibrant and has become very successful. And even looking at opportunities to maybe expand out their work. And so I'm really excited for their work on there. IAF, again, a program that when we first started this conversation was struggling, and now has a record number of memberships, attendees, and other viewers. And so they have gone from something that we were kind of trying to nurture along to something that has become something we can hold on at the college as one of our successes. WNMC continues to perform incredibly well. And then I look at Dinos, right? Dinos had to navigate a really tough environment with federal grant changes and everything else. And not only have they done that, they were successfully able to earn their accreditation, grow out some of their financial supports, and work with the foundation more to keep the Dinos a vibrant part of this college. And all that came out of this strategy. And I'd probably be remiss if I didn't mention the Culinary Meets Maritime Certificate. That was one of my favorite ticker headlines that came out of this entire strategy or this entire strategic plan, us taking an asset in the Great Lakes Maritime Academy, an asset in the Great Lakes Culinary Institute, and say, why don't we throw those two things together? And we successfully did, launched the program, incredibly unique, that now has students out in the field, or graduates out in the field, working in high-paying jobs, cooking in a maritime environment. So my takeaway for you would be, I think you can be proud of this plan as trustees. You helped us drive this. You helped us think through big picture. You helped us think about budgeting and everything else, and I really do appreciate that. You also held us accountable, and I can speak on behalf of all the champions, that we also appreciated that, because that meant that you were listening to what we were doing and understanding what we're trying to get done. So, you know, we all did this together, from the board, to PC, to our faculty and staff, and other members, you know? You helped us prioritize this and ultimately prioritize it at department level. So I'm really excited for this work. It took everything my power not to start putting stuff about the next plan in here, but I've been told by some members of the audience that I need to just focus on the celebration part, and I think that's probably actually true in this case. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jason. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Troy, Steve, and Todd, Marcus, as well, for this incredible work. It is absolutely something we should all be very proud of and take time to celebrate before moving on. I think that's a great idea. So thank you, Jason. I would like to open it up to the board now for questions. Kenner?
By concentrating on a number of these areas, we've done pretty well. You've got a pretty good record here. How do we keep the momentum going?
So I think that's great. We've already started that. So our next strap plan development actually kicked off in June. We're heavily relying on our Leadership Council, which is made up of basically the leaders from across campus. More importantly, they're also like our frontline workers. They see exactly what maybe students are running into, faculty, staff, and others, and they're most likely to be our objective leads. We know in that next plan that we're probably going to have about 80% carryover of the current plan plus key college projects. So think campus master plan, brand identity, and our other work, revenue diversification that we're already working on. And so when I look at that next plan, we know student success, enrollment, and others are going to be front and center. We also know that we're going to have a focus on future-focused education, think about technology changes, AI, et cetera. We need to be at the front of changes in terms of not only do our, how our students interact with it, but how do we interact with it? And so we also know that, we know, we also know that campus vibrancy and belonging are a key part of that master plan work. So we have those things going right now, and then our goal is, we'll have some info, a little bit of opening conference, we have a steering committee plan at the end of this week, and then we're going to keep engaging employee, faculty, and community groups to kind of refine those broader strategies. And of course, we've heard the board at the study sessions and other give us feedback.
Trustee Robichaud.
This was great. You did a marvelous job. You and the whole team did a marvelous job of really making this all happen. What are the two things that you took away from this that you were going to apply to? What did you learn, two things that you're going to apply to the next set, that you didn't know coming into this?
Yes. So I want a little bit of some, I think we need to be able to assess the objectives annually, and either sunset them earlier so that we can prioritize our work on the ones that are still open, or like make some adjustments. So for instance, we've known that we had kind of some wonky data in one of our strategies for a long time, but based on the feedback that we had at the consultant at the time they asked us to leave it, I wouldn't do that, because it just doesn't give us a clear target. Like, I don't want to shoot for something that's not, either not achievable or not accurate. So I would want some flexibility in terms of how we strategize that. The other thing I want to do is I want to, well, want to make sure, and we started to do it, I want to make sure that we continue to push these down into the department levels to help them do their prioritization. You know, we use an A3 process at the college here, where each department looks at their work. I want to make sure that we can do some better alignment between the strap plan and A3s. I think we had a really good job from some of our departments. Others, I think, they just, they just need to understand how they can align to it, because that's how we can resource things. And I think once we have that full understanding, I think this next plan will be even more successful than this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. If I can just highlight three things, and Jason touched on these, but I think they bear some emphasis. And the first is to remind you, board, that I get together about four times a year with the presidents of the Michigan Community College Association, and we often talk about our strategies. The thing that I can tell you is, we do something that no other community college in the state of Michigan does, and that is, this is the number one issue on our monthly board meeting. They literally will look at me cross-eyed and say, why do you talk about this every month? And I look back at them and go, well, I don't know what else we'd talk about. This is our focus. This is, you know, what we're here to do. And I say hats off to you for having that courage, that focus, that discipline that allows us every month to come back to that. It holds us accountable, and I think it's a very transparent process. So I appreciate your leadership as a board and that courageousness to keep it front and center. The second thing is, and it might be easy to overlook, because we go on to the next thing typically when we wrap something up, but I think it bears taking a moment here, is we collectively, as a college, as the board, as a community, we've seen this now through to finish, from beginning to end. And not many people even move from plan to plan execution, let alone from plan execution to completion. And here you are, sitting tonight, seeing something that this board collectively undertook three years ago, and here we are at the completion phase. And the last thing I'd say is, tomorrow, Jason is leading us in the opening conference in a celebration. And while he's given a lot of accolades here tonight, beyond our champions, our objective leads, there were tens of people in the college who were in those objective leads roles, and there were literally hundreds in the action planning phase. Tomorrow, Jason will help us celebrate as a college. So I just want to drive those three things home, which I think distinguish us in terms of our strategic plan.
Thank you, President S. Lee, and I thank you for your leadership as well. And moving on next, thank you, Jason. Moving on next to the faculty report, I'd like to welcome Dr. Jerry Dobik. He leads our astronomy program, and I had the pleasure of meeting you and speaking to you during our orientation visit to the planet.
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm back as promised. Two years ago, actually, it'd be two years ago next month in September, came to the board with this crazy idea of offering an online astronomy course. I said, at that time, I remember, I forgot in my mind, offering an English course online? Yeah. History course online? Sure. Lots of reading, lots of writing. Math course? Eh, maybe. A science course? What? I learned something from COVID. Sorry to say, but something bad as COVID was, it taught us innovation, or led us to more innovation. After 36 years here at NMC, I'm learning new innovation every single day. With COVID, where we couldn't have the students look through the telescope, I adapted a security camera mounted to the telescope to show them pictures, more importantly, video. But the video looked just like as if they're looking through the telescope. And that's the way I taught the students through all the COVID time. So I began to capture those videos and hang on to them, thinking, if I can do that with So I began to capture those videos and hang on to them, thinking if I can do that with students in the classroom away from a telescope, maybe I can do it online. So two years ago, I came here saying, we're going to try this, let's see how it works. My goal for this was not just to offer an astronomy course online, but to teach those that could not come to N M C, give them the opportunity to see what we see through the telescope, give them a science education that they wouldn't normally get. So, oh, there's the golden retriever. I think she's part fish. Every time I get her within 100 yards of the beach, she drags me to the beach. Me and my wife, Kim, and just we can't stop her from going in the water. She'll spend an hour more in the water by herself and not just where she can touch bottom. She's out swimming. Planetary astronomy, A S T 109, first offered in the spring semester for 2024, and it had a full enrollment of students. Okay. I stole from Jay, thank you, an outline of how to set up the course in Moodle, and I've converted over to Canvas where each week is set specifically, this week is a start date, this is the end date. So it starts on Sunday at 12:00 midnight, or actually 12:01 in the morning, and ends on Sunday evening. So each week is outlined, and in the weeks, and this is the part the students really like, it's the same thing every single week for them, so it's consistent. There's a one, two, three, four, five. There's, this is the learning objective. It states exactly what I want you to learn from this week's segment. Then there's a read and something to submit. I want them to read, but check their reading. I ask them questions at the end of chapter, they submit those. Then there's watch, usually a video, sometimes of me presenting something for them or another video to, for them to learn from. And then it's a do, usually something either a quiz or test, and then another do, which is involving a lab assignment. So there's learn, read, watch and do-do. So each one of the segments there move on, so it may be quizzes, maybe tests, different lab assemblies, assignments. And I have a lot of recorded videos that's done with the eGlass from our instructional management team here, outlining those things that are not in the textbooks. So the textbooks is about half of what they should learn. The, watching the videos is just under the other half of it. The remaining portion is for them to do the lab activities. So I have lab activities for them to incorporate. I walk them through the mathematics so that they fully understand what we're talking about, when we, we mean small angle formula, engineers, Jay and myself, we've worked with things of degrees and radians, that's simple stuff, big things. In astronomy, we work with very small things, arc seconds, which is 3,600 arc seconds and one degree. So it's really small things. I give them a small angle format to those things. So the student enrollment, I was hoping for full classes. These online classes offer an opportunity to have 23 students in each one of the online courses. So for spring 2024 was the first offering, we had 23 students in the class. It was filled. In fall 2024, we had 23 again. I had a few on the waiting list, but didn't have enough to offer in another section. In spring of 2025, we had two sections of that. This is also offering the normal face-to-face courses of astronomy besides that. Fall that needs to be corrected, it now has 23, so that class is closed again for fall semester. I have a couple on the waiting list, so hopefully we'll push those into doing things in the spring. More importantly, where did they come from? All right, it's obvious, yeah, a lot of them come from Traverse City, but we're getting them from outlined regions that may be difficult for them to drive to the Traverse City campus. So Mountain close by, Gaylord a little further away, Reed City, Grand Rapids, Midland, Caro, which I had to look it up where it's at, it's in the thumb area, right? Empire Michigan, Marion, but then the surprise places, this is where they were taking course from, and this is the part that I'm somewhat happy about. Chicago, Illinois, New York, New York, where they have trouble seeing the moon when it's full because of the light pollution that's there. Knoxville, Tennessee, Colorado Springs, Bozeman, Montana. How did they learn about us? I need to start asking these students those questions. I think the one, I think, one was doing it in Bozeman, started in Traverse City and moved back home to Bozeman, Montana, and continued to take the astronomy course there at that location. So that's the thing I was hoping for, to reach the students that couldn't come to the Traverse City area or to the N M C Observatory, but still get the experience of an astronomy course. So it may be possible to actually do something like that, offering an online science course to people not necessarily in this area. I still love for them to come out to the observatory. As you know, it's a beautiful telescope, wonderful location, good dark sky location. We continue to celebrate preserving dark skies and those things that curtail the light pollution as much as we can. So, but those people that are shrouded in light pollution, I was able to reach them as well. Okay, what they like? The convenience, learning on their time. So the assignments are offered on, on Sunday, they finish it off on Saturday, but I open up two or three weeks, so if they want to work ahead of time, they can. They keep them on pace, they keep them moving when they can, they like that. They're still viewing objects basically through a lab, even though they're in light polluted areas, they're seeing not just pictures, they're seeing video. The video looks just like as if you're looking through the N M C telescope. So you see the waving objects moving around because of atmospheric distortion. It's not Hubble Space Telescope pictures. I want to show them Hubble or Webb telescope pictures, why offer them a course? They can see those online all day, all day long. I want to give them the experience of looking through a telescope without having to look through a telescope. It's not an easy course, so they like the fact that it is challenging. What they don't like, it's challenging. Wish that they could view physically through the telescope, but that's difficult to do when they're in one location, telescopes in another. And I don't expect them to buy $1,000 telescopes or more for viewing things. So this is what we're providing for them, something like that. They would like to have the opportunity to verbally ask questions or interact with the instructor. That's the thing that they see as a bit of a downfall of the online course. I'm not sure if there's any way we could ever get away from that. What they would like to see changed, of course, more in-depth discussions, but unfortunately we only have so much time to teach them so much as an introductory astronomy course. I'd love to be able to give them more, or other topics in astronomy. So should I be developing other courses for astronomy? Maybe so. That's a plan for maybe something in the future. Questions, comments, suggestions? Favorite recipe? Yeah?
Yeah, I just wondered if you have thought about having an hour or so a week for Q and A with them in person? Not in person, I mean online, but have you thought about that?
No, I've offered that where we can do a Zoom session with that, and I have done that with a couple of the students. I want to offer it more on a more structured basis for them so that they know coming into the semester, try and plan for these days, I'm going to be online for about anywhere from a half hour to 45 minutes, maybe a full hour with them, going through discussions and question and answers. Yeah, so I am getting ready to offer something to them for that. It's like I said, I'm forever changing my course delivery and probably always will be.
Any other questions?
Very kind.
If I can say something to really shine the light on Jerry. Three years ago, I was on an interview committee for Senator Stabenow. Actually, for the last five years, I've served on her Service Academy Interview Committee. Three years ago, there was a young woman who we were interviewing who did end up getting an appointment and attending the Air Force Academy. I remember she just was full of passion and said she wanted to major in astronomical engineering. And I said, where did you get this passion from? And she stood up proudly and she said, it was my instructor. I said, well, who was that instructor? Like, why did that? She said, well, someone at N M C, it was Jerry Dobik. And she went on to say that she took two dual-enrolled classes when she was in high school, astronomy classes with Jerry. And I think it speaks to the, the passion that Jerry brings to this work, that he can excite high school kids who might end up going to the Air Force Academy. So we're really happy to have Jerry and the passion he brings to this program.
Any other questions?
Well, what I guess my follow-up would be, what programs are the students typically enrolled in that take your course?
They're anywhere from, I still get a lot of students that want to go through education, and part of C M U's program is they have to take an earth science class and they have to take an astronomy course. So even in the online astronomy course, I had a couple of education majors that were in there. Many of them are general studies, some are looking for physical sciences, for physical science courses. They're, even though they're biology majors, they have to pick a second science, so astronomy excites them. So it's from all varying ranges. It's not just physics majors. As a matter of fact, I've had very few physics majors actually take the astronomy, astronomy course, which is kind of unusual.
Well, thank you, Jerry. Really appreciate your time today.
You're welcome. Monday mornings at 7:50 on Z 93. We talk about science on, on the radio here in Traverse City every Monday morning. It's, well, people are driving in, so catch us at 7:50 in the morning. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, now is the time for public input. Lynn, do we have any? No? Okay, we're going to move on then. Next is President Nisley's update.
I'd like to share six things with you here today. And one is I want to be sure that I say this publicly, so for those who are listening in or just for the record, is to say thank you to all of you for attending the summer M C C A conference. And I know it's an amazing amount of time that you have to find a way, but I appreciate the commitment because it allows you to network with other trustees, to see other colleges, and also it's a way of, or a form of professional development, I think allows us to, to grow together. And two things in the specific there that I was really proud of, and it was the work that Diana Fairbanks did with our chair, Laura Alwinger, and I think you'd all probably agree that they pretty much stole the show, and we could be really proud of, of the work that they described there. And the second was that we all got to bear witness to Kristy McDonald, our faculty member, earning the Faculty of the Year Award from M C C A. In other words, of all faculty across all 31 community colleges, it was an M C C A instructor who earned that this year. So I hope when you left there, you felt that you were part of something incredibly proud and that you could be proud as trustees of the work we do because they felt like at the end of that, we were a top M C C A community college. The second thing is I hope you all noticed some of the brand buds as you were coming in, whether it was out over the security desk or down the hall, or maybe as you stepped into Hawkeye Cafe, maybe some of the wayfinding signs, maybe our new letters out there. Maybe you were on another campus and you noticed some of the new flags or the new signage. Maybe it was coming into main campus, whether it was the front gate or the back gate, you noticed the new signage. But the thing that Diana and her team have been doing over these last three weeks or so is beginning to get these brand buds out. At first, we thought, you know, we may need to do some type of a covering of these things so we could do a great unveiling. One, that was going to be incredibly impractical, but two, I can't tell you the positive energy it's created here on campus over the last three weeks. Everyone is like going out, doing the eye spy exercise every day, kind of looking for the new thing. And just as we were coming in here, Catherine and I were standing out in the lobby and a woman came up and said how much she loves the Innovation Center, and then she turned around and she said, I really love this new branding. So we're hearing that from our own faculty, our own staff, our own students and community members. Tomorrow, though, will be the formal unveiling. So if you're coming along to the opening conference, you'll get to be part of the energy and excitement there. But a big hats off to Diana who helped us, as you know, with the vision, but also with the incredible tactical work over these last few weeks. The third thing I'd like to share is we do a really good job, I believe, with our relationships with legislators, but this last month, we really had a lot going on in terms of things that we hosted here on campus. For example, Senator Peters sought us out to bring his entire staff of almost 70 staffers, which isn't normal, but he had six committees, so thus 70 staffers. He brought all 70 of them here to Traverse City, to N M C, to our Great Lakes campus for their annual retreat. They got to go onboard the state of Michigan, they got to go onboard the new tug, they got to get out with our marine tech students, they got to get out with our U A S and, and the drones. And when you think about that, those are 70 people who are probably going to be some pretty sophisticated staffers, if not politicians themselves in the future, who now have had a touch point with N M C and a very, very positive experience. And before they left, they also had an incredible meal at Lobdell's as well. So proud that Jason did a great job organizing and leading that effort, but a whole lot of people involved there. We also had Representative Roth, which was part of the Michigan Legislative Exchange, goes by the acronym A M I L E, something that Michigan State has put together, has been around for decades, and it tries to bring together a Republican legislator with a Democrat legislator, sets them down in the others' district, and they learn about their district through their eyes. And this last week, we had Representative Roth and Representative Glanville together. And what we got to see was Representative Roth being proud, showing off his college to Representative Glanville, Glanville and Representative Glanville getting a little bit smarter about N M C and the programs we offer. So a good hosting there. Third, we also hosted Rotary. I do an annual state of the college or college update, and this year we did it with Picnic out here under the pines, so it was a good opportunity to get some key leaders from throughout Traverse City Rotarians together and update them on the college. Also, Troy did a great job leading a hosting of Representative Kofia this last month, which was really important in light of the stalled budget talks that aren't occurring in Lansing right now. Troy was able to really highlight some very specific things about how some of the proposals coming out of the House right now really would be untenable for us, and I think did a great job helping Representative Kofia better understand that. The fourth thing that I'd highlight is the Scholarship Open returned. As many of you know, we were on a four-year hiatus, but we did hold the 41st annual event. And while Catherine and her team are still doing the counting, what we can tell you is that event in these last 41 years has raised over $2 million. When we ended it four years ago, we were making somewhere north of $100,000 netting on it. Chances are, we're going to come in pretty close to that, which is really amazing when you think we took a four-year hiatus and we weren't built into people's budgets, but we're really proud. And I can tell you that every single person who I talked out there said a big thank you, that they were glad that we brought it back. And again, hats off to Catherine and her team for courageously taking that back on. I'd also highlight too, I think I shared with many of you, but it, it bears repeating, we did receive an anonymous gift from an alumna this last month, a million-dollar gift that's going to jumpstart the Osterlin renovation. And I should say it was actually a $1.2 million gift, $1 million going to the Osterlin renovation, but $200,000 going to establish an endowment for a food pantry with the desire that no N M C student go hungry in the future. So really happy to, to share that news, which again, is that great work that Catherine and the foundation are leading. The next to the last thing here is just to remind you, when we look ahead this next month, I am just really excited with some key things that I think speak to a lot of what Jason mentioned in the strategic plan, things that we've been working on the last three, four, five years that are really coming to fruition. One is we have the groundbreaking for the Freshwater Research Innovation Center coming up September 12th. Again, that's something that we began envisioning about five years ago, about four, in the three years, we got the $15 million support from the state. We've been raising money through private philanthropy, and we're just within a $3 million striking range, and thus the shovel goes in the ground on September 12th. And that building will be complete then by the spring of '27. So something really exciting there. But then you pair that with aviation, that later, that week, September 15th, we're going to have the ribbon cutting for aviation. As you know, that's about a $14 million undertaking, which has gotten us up to 21 planes. And as you know, those 21 or additional planes need additional hangar space, and thus the 50% increase in our hangar space. So again, that's been about five years in the work coming to fruition. And the last, September 23rd, we've got an open house for all the university partners who this week, we will have them 100% moved out of the university center over here to Beckett. I just took a walk through there this morning and ran into three G V S U faculty who were incredibly excited and passionate about being on this campus, and it was great to hear their energy. So some big things coming up here in the next 30 days. So some big things coming up here in the next 30 days. And the last thing that I'd mention to you is, I know some of you have already volunteered or signed up to be part of Welcome Week, and especially the Move-In. Thursday, we got Move-In at North Hall, Friday, Move-In at East Hall. Friday, we also have the kayaking on the bay. Saturday morning, we do the annual pancakes with the president's crew. I know we got a couple of you joining us, so it'll be great to invite the board into that this year as well. But all that energy that marks the start of fall semester, we're really excited. Last week, we invited the RAs back, and now, in just two days, we'll be inviting all the students back. So thank you for your support with all that Welcome Week, but all those things that I just mentioned, we couldn't do without yet.
Thank you, Dr. Nisley. For me, I had two things I wanted to talk about for the, for the board update, both of which were just covered really well by President Nisley. First was really a point of pride that I had at the MCCA, this is my first, and to see the level of talent. You walk into a place as a, you know, being a part of NMC as a student, you know, so it's been a part of my life for decades, you know, you think what this wonderful institution is, but at the same time, that is anecdotal, it's in my heart, I'm passionate about this place, you know, I'm a homer, as they say, right? Like, I think this place is, I have evidence now, not to say anything negatively about the other colleges, they're all amazing, but to see our team, to see the impact that we had, to have these conversations about the struggles that others have and the things that they're working on. And anyway, I'd walked away from that event with a real sense of pride and kind of validation to everything that I've believed in this institution for a very long time. Secondly, Welcome Week, I'd love to, you know, we've already covered this, thank you, Nick, but there's so much going on, and I look forward to seeing each of you participating this coming up week. I'm very excited, this is my first Welcome Week, and we'll see, I think, pretty much everyone in this room, probably starting tomorrow. So look forward to all of that, there's so much energy, it's an exciting time, time of the year in general, but with everything that's coming up with branding and all of these exciting things coming in September, it's really going to be a great fall, looking forward to it. Moving on, Lynn, we need a motion for, so we need a motion to accept the consent items?
I'll make the motion, support.
Okay. And any opposition? Okay, so that passes. And we have two action items, both related. And before we take a motion to accept these, I would like to open it up for questions or conversation.
We're now talking about the action items, the two separate action items, so the delegation.
Yes, that's correct. The action items, yeah.
So being the newest trustee at my second meeting, I was wondering if Troy is available? If you wouldn't mind giving a bit of background on the process of engaging PFM and TERN?
Yeah, so PFM and TRU, we've worked with them as our professional advisors for, I would say, at least a decade. I think PFM was previously Stoddard Barch, and that one goes back maybe a couple decades. But being a, kind of, being an advisory service, we felt going based on trust and relationship was the way forward, and so we stuck with TRU and PFM for this issuance.
Thank you. Are there other bonds that are currently outstanding for capital projects in the college?
The college has 28 million right now outstanding in bonds.
And then with this newest issuance, noted that the first payment is May of 2026, so that would be this fiscal year. Have we contemplated that in our budget, or we feel confident in being able to absorb then the amortization schedule?
We do. I think either through plant fund reserves or through the proceeds themselves, you can make those first couple payments. So I think, given the desire to move ahead with this project as quickly as possible, you know, we think we can pay for those out of our plant fund reserves.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, can I get a motion to, to accept the resolution authorizing the issuance and of the delegation of sale of bonds as described in action item Q?
I'll make the motion, support.
Any opposition? Okay, that passes. And any, moving on to action item R, similar, any questions specific, any other questions related to the bonds? No? Okay, then I would like a motion, please, to accept action item R.
So moved.
I'll support.
All right, thank you, and that passes as well. Any opposition?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? Is this in, do we need a roll call vote on this, then?
I'll just go to the other section.
Okay. And any other questions before we move on? And did we have any follow-up?
None noted.
With that, I think we're done. You're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.